We are going to call our meeting to order for the Clayton County Board of Education Work Session. I'm going to call the row again, starting with District One, Ms. Bowles. District Two, Mr. Mark Christmas.
Present.
District Three, Jessie Gorrie, that's me. District Four, Ms. Victoria Williams.
Present.
District Five, Dr. Dee Haney. District Six, Ms. Mary Baker.
Present.
District Seven, Ms. Sabrina Hill.
Present.
District Eight, Mr. Joy Taylor Cooper. District Nine, Mr. Benjamin Straker.
Present.
Superintendent, Dr. Anthony Smith.
Present.
Attorney, Mr. Clem Doyle.
Present.
Board Liaison, Ms. Kim Blackwood.
Present.
Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent and Board, Ms. Alicia Battle. Administrative Assistant to Dr. Douglas Hendricks, Ms. Dawn Blough. All right. Okay, at this time, we didn't have executive session today, and I want to have us stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get started, I would like to take a moment of silence for us to acknowledge one that we just lost that was near and dear to us. That's Ms. Marcy Walker, who was a parent liaison at Huey Elementary School, and someone that I've known, the family, for quite some time, and quite devastating at this time of the year. So let's take a moment of silence for Ms. Walker, please. Thank you. At this time, I'm gonna let Ms. Williams also have a moment, please. Ms. Williams.
Good evening. So I wanted to do a moment of silence for someone a lot of people may know his name. He was, he used to work with the Upper Bound Program and Teen Coalition. His name, Kenny Stallings. I just heard today that he was killed in a car crash yesterday. And you might have seen him at the graduations just this past week. He was there. So they have school, they have students in all the schools in Clayton County. So I'd like to give a moment of silence for him, his family.
Thanks. All right, I'm going to read the ethics statement. The ethics statement says, "In accordance with Board Policy BH, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of such conflicts. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearance of such conflict with respect to any matter scheduled to come before the board at this meeting or appearing on our proposed agenda? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict and refrain from participation in the matter involved." At this time, I need an adoption, a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Ms. Cooper.
Present.
All right, I just need a second, Ms. Baker.
Second.
All right, it's been moved improperly second for us to adopt the agenda. All right, the vote is unanimous. All right, at this time, we will have updates to the board. First thing that I have on the agenda is the Business Services Budget Presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Smith. I have a presentation. I don't know if Ms. Blackwood has it pulled up. It's a little different.
It's, it should be, it's an E-ball. Okay, what we could do then is we could switch out. And are you on the different computer? Okay, let's go ahead and have teaching and learning present. We'll just do that.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First of all, I want to say that I'm so proud of the graduation ceremonies we had, and I want to thank the staff members who put it together. They worked very hard under the leadership of Ms. Stephanie Trice. Of course, she's one of our newest executive directors, and she came in middle of the year almost and just was just being able to have just a very successful opportunity to work with the team and to execute our graduations. I know, I hope you were pleased with how the PAC looked upon entry. We've heard nothing but great things about that, and parents and students are asking for that again next school year, and a very positive experience for the GICC. So I want to say thank you to the faculty and staff for all the work that they put into that.
Well, before you go on, let's, board, they did a great job. I'm sorry, hey. I'm sorry. I want to give them a clap. Did I steal your thunder? I'm sorry.
You steal my thunder.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. I also want to thank each of the board members for attending. You all were at most of, most of you were at all the graduation, and I might misspeak, but I hope I don't misspeak. Dr. Gorrie, were you the only one at all of the graduations that you have company? Oh, Ms. Mary Baker. Ms. Sabrina Hill. Who else?
We gonna stand up.
Raise your hand, raise your hand. Stand up.
Perfect attendance, everybody that made, all of them, starting, starting with elite scholars all the way through.
So, thank you, and Dr. Smith.
All right, perfect, yes.
Thank you. It just really appreciate the commitment to our scholars and just really celebrating and honoring our students. And so I just want to say personally, thank you, but on behalf of Clayton County Public Schools, faculty and staff, thank you, members of the board, for all of your support that you give to ensure that we send our graduates off with the best of wishes. So thank you again very much. But I also want to say another thank you for the scholarships that you provided to our students, and so thank you for that. Let's give them a round of applause. In addition to that, our scholarships from our superintendent and the Clayton County Foundation, we want to say again, thank you very much for all that you're doing. We look forward to next school year. Matter of fact, I sent an email out and saying today, let's plan for graduation 2025. So that planning, it starts today to make the things happen at the end of the school year. We don't wait to the last minute, and so I'm just so very proud of all the great things. Just be mindful that if you giving out scholarships and any other accolades for graduation, please let us know in Atlanta so we can recruit as many students as possible to be recipients of these wonderful opportunities. So just let us know, let the whole team know, so that we can all rally around our schools and our students and get them, give them opportunities to be successful. So thank you again. Okay, all right. So I'm giving you a brief update on summer school, and I mean, it's going to be brief. You have your executive summary. In your executive summary, you have the description of the summer programs, and this is just a follow-up of the presentation I provided to you in March. We have our students enrolled in the summer program. Actually, some are starting today with our fine arts camps, and they will continue to be implemented until June the 27th. We have no sessions on Fridays. We, the teachers, we heard what they ask us to do is to give them a four-day week. The students asked for that, and so we honored that, and that gave us a chance to recruit more teachers to want to participate. We will, like I said before, we don't wait to the last minute to start recruiting. We'll be recruiting beginning in September. We'll be laying out our plans for the 25 school year summer programs. You have the listing of the programs. You have the account as of the printing of the executive summary. This is just enrollment, and we will keep track of the warm body count. We do that all summer long, and at the conclusion of the summer program, we'll come back and give you the comparison of the enrollment to the actual participation of our summer program. And just to be reminded, our credit recovery, which we have for our high school, it is both for recovering credit and for enrichment. And so just look at your executive summary for additional information. And my last presentation for this period, I come back later on for Swiss, is the Georgia Milestones. I'm not going to go into details as those data points are incomplete and embargoed, but you have a good report. I hope you've read that report. I will say that we saw, we're seeing increases in all content areas and all grade levels at this time, and so we have more data to receive from the Georgia Department of Education, and then we will have the final release of all of the data points in probably the second week of June, if not the first week of June. And so just be mindful, we'll get that to you as soon as the updates are available. We will update that spreadsheet, it's called Attachment A. We will, we will update that on Friday, so if you click on Attachment A in the executive summary by, on Friday afternoon, you should see any updates that we may have for the preliminary Georgia milestone data. That concludes my presentation. There any questions?
Mrs. Straker.
Dr. Young.
Yes, sir.
I must commend you on your, your predictions and, and estimates on the scholarship funds for the high school. You were pretty accurate, give or take 4%. Do you have any plans or ideas on increasing those scholarships for specific schools next year?
Absolutely. As we discussed earlier, well, last week, we talked about working more closely with our schools, with our school leadership and our counselors. For example, one of the things we were going to recommend is that school principals, high school principals, create what we call a college and career readiness team. That would be a team of teachers who support juniors, and for example, in our language arts team member would be helping teach students fill out applications, whether the job application or college application, our math teachers working with our students to help them fill out the FASA, et cetera. So every school will have its own team comprised of teachers, leaders, and counselors and other individuals to help the process along, as well as getting information about scholarships sooner. We'll be asking for that throughout and ensuring that we follow up closely with our schools to see where we are and along with the progress. So I guess what I'm saying is this, it'll be a lot more progress monitoring of, of that process and ensuring that our students have the access and the support to what they need to be successful.
Thank you.
Ms. Cooper.
Dr. Young, if you could just please repeat those dates for me. You said enrollment started, did you say 5/28?
Which, which?
For the enrichment, the summer?
Yes, we started today, actually, with the fine arts, and it's June the 3rd, June the 3rd to June the 27th, I believe. It's the Thursday, the last Thursday in July. There are no sessions on Fridays, and there's no session on June 19th.
Okay, thank you.
I'll send back out the summer school, remember the document I sent out, I'll send that back out.
Thank you, ma'am.
No problem.
Ms. Hill.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Young. I just have two questions. I know you did give us numbers as to the enrollment, but overall, how many students do we have enrolled in our summer programs collectively?
So overall, we have over 4,000 students enroll in our summer program, and so pushing close to almost 5,000 because we have a large number of students who are in our credit recovery. I call it credit recovery, but I just use the word edgenuity online at high school. We have almost 1,600 students right now enrolled, but more will enroll, and for them, we actually started that summer program in April. It's because we really want to get our kids on track to graduate. We didn't wait to June to start theirs. We started theirs in April.
That's excellent, and I commend you for being proactive. My follow-up question to that is, do we have a mix of scholars who have participated in our summer program, meaning those who would need assistance in increasing and enhancing in their reading skills, as well as those who are doing enrichment?
So the answer is yes. Not only do we allow students with varying academic abilities to enroll, we also made a big push to ensure a student with disabilities are enrolled, as well as our English learners are enrolled. Although you see a summer program for newcomers, and those newcomers, those are the students new to the United States of America, but students who are not identified as newcomers, they are also enrolled in our summer programs. We've been very proactive in trying to recruit and get parents and students enrolled in our different programs, because as a district, we do embrace diversity and inclusion, and so we've been really taking forward, looking forward to a concerted effort to get our kids interested in the program. The only thing, our biggest challenge is that we just ask parents and students to come along with us.
Awesome. And just to follow up on the question asked by my colleague, Mr. Straker, in, in reference to our scholarship programs and enhancing the career and college readiness, I know you're proposing to bring a team together in our high schools. I'm just curious as to how that would look, being that counselors are limited and how they're able to assist in that way, and if it was to be implemented, what are we taking away in order for them to make that possible?
So a good question. So the work that counselors are doing, this is part of their work. They should be helping our students, and Dr. Crawford can give some more guidance on that, but this is actually their work as the guidance and counselor. So I don't see where it's an idea of taking anything away, but us being able, us district staff being able to support our counseling department and our schools with the staff that we have to go out and support. And I'm giving you a good example. Recently, we have the opportunity to recruit students to participate in the Fort Valley State University Summer Program for our rising ninth graders, and so we had four slots allotted to us. We actually have eight students, candidates, who will be going into the program. And how did we do that? We brought our team together of central office staff, CTAE, guidance and counseling, math, science, and school chores, myself. We met, we put together a very quick plan, worked with the counselors, worked with parents, had Zoom meetings with the parents, and there was a fee to going to their summer program. This is a pre-engineering program, and then we, as the district, we're absorbing that fee for our students. So it just shows you that we have the capacity to have teams, and when teams come together, we can make dreams come true.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
And to answer your question, Ms. Hill, one of the things that we've done this year, we were very instrumental in making sure that we clearly define the role of the school counselor, making sure that they understand direct services and indirect services, and we've been working with our leaders, our school counselors, and other teams to make sure that they know these are the things, and this is the percentage of time you're supposed to spend in each area. We're not completely there, but it has definitely improved, and our goal is to make sure they understand 80%, 20%, where they're supposed to spend their time so that they can really, really hone in on those advisement skills and those things that are necessary to do that portion of their work. So all hands on deck, and that starts with being aware.
And approximately, approximately how many students?
Excuse me, Ms. Hill, I'm gonna come back to you. Let me come back so the other members will come back. Ms. Bowles had her light on, and then we'll come back to you.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I actually have a series of questions as well, so I don't mind if Ms. Hill finishes.
Well, look, the, our, the Roberts rules we have, we let everybody go through, and then we'll come back. If you have more questions, you do too, we'll, we'll go back, because everybody's lights popping up. So go ahead and ask yours, and then we'll just come back. If not, I'll just go to the next light.
Good evening, Dr. Young. I have summer school questions.
Yes.
Three of them.
Yes.
The first one is, I noticed that the high school options are virtual, largely outside of the arts, and I just wanted to hear more about that.
So having a virtual, well, thank, you can thank COVID for that. The students themselves, we tried with the AIR program to do face-to-face. They would not show up. The students talked about having other obligations to want to do things, and so they made a commitment to participate in the virtual, and part of that participation requires tremendous oversight, and so we have a lot of oversight, and I can tell you about the success we've had this school year, where we were at like 36% completion rate. We've raised that up to 78% completion rate. Although the program is virtual, all teachers have office hours, and either the office hours is a volunteer to participate or mandatory participation. It's mandatory when students do not meet their quota for completion that is identified as like 65% of the course, they have to come in and meet with their teacher to get guidance and advice. Such something new we started this year so that we have greater success in our program. And if you look at the numbers that you see for enrollment and the number of actual students, and you can see we have more students, more enrollment, which means a student may be taking two or three classes than we have students. That helps us to get our students back on track or for them to advance. So we are giving them the guidance, but we are following what they ask us to do.
That's perfect. I, thank you so much for that. Outside of the student requests, which I think is most important, I also wondered if it was around, you know, sometimes high school students want to work, and so it's good to hear you were listening to the feedback of the kids. My, that leads to my second question, which is, is this instruction synchronous or asynchronous?
It is asynchronous for them. There is a synchronous component, but again, our students have asked us to say, hey, I got to do ABC, I can do this.
I want to go back and watch it later, access to.
But again, when we see them getting behind, we jump in.
Thank you so much. And my last question, which I think I can now understand based on what you've said, there are multiple enrollments at almost all the high schools, and you're right, I see that there are more enrollments than students. So one scholar's taking multiple classes. My question is, are these classes taught at this scholar's home high school, or is there some type of central instruction happening virtually based on content expertise or any ratios or any of that? Are the scholar's teachers at their homeschool?
Yes.
Or throughout the district?
So their, the support structure is at their home school. So you can see that each high school has a certain number of students involved, except for elite scholars. Elite scholars and steel and oil may be at one, you know, a different school because it's so few of them, but for all of our other students, we have supports for them at the home school. And we did this similarly for our AIR program and credit recovery program throughout the school year as well. Thanks, Dr. Young.
Ms. Baker.
Okay, you, you gave kudos to the board member showing up, but I want to let everybody know that we had staff there the entire time.
Oh, yes, yes.
And they weren't just sitting there playing cards or anything. They all had their laptops out and they were working. So with that being said, I want to give a shout out to our technology department, because those people couldn't have been on those laptops, because there's not that many outlets in that thing, if it hadn't been for them and bringing a printer and making sure that everybody was there. So this graduation is hard.
It is.
But it's a group effort, and, you know, we, we are so proud of those kids as they walk across the stage, and if any of you watch, I'm sure you'll see one or two or most of us boo-hooing through several of those speeches by our students. So thank you again to the staff who continue to work the whole time, and from sunup to sundown, plus some, so thank you.
And so, and before we move from that, just want to make sure, we think of all of our staff and security, transportation, I mean, everybody, just, just give everybody a round of applause.
All right. Dr. Haney.
Hi, Dr. Young, thank you. In reference to the college and career readiness team, how soon, this would go into effect in a new school year?
Yes, 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 yes.
This is for Dr. Crawford, perhaps. How many counselors are currently in the high schools? Do you all know? How many counselors are currently?
The counselors?
Yeah, in the high schools.
Four or five, it's four or five, depending on size of the school. Okay. Depending on the size of the school, it's four to five counselors in the high school.
High school, okay. And so the team you said would be comprised of teachers, leaders, counselors?
Parents.
Also, it's just, okay, all right, okay. Okay. All right, that's what I needed. Thank you.
All right, stay up there, Ms. Dr. Crawford. I think Ms. Hill was probably asking, she may need your help. I was just trying to, you know, to just get, go back and forth, so let Ms. Hill go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and my question was, what is the ratio, students to counselor?
Oh, my goodness, I'm gonna have to refer to Dr. Gunn, I think it's around the 800, but I don't want to say the wrong answer.
I'll have to get that, I'll give it back to you. You can follow up at your convenience. No worries. 1 to 450. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Well, I want to point out, since we're talking about counselors, and earlier in the year in October, I did a college fair, and I do want to commend the counseling department because we had people come from all over, as far as Savannah and Griffin Spalding, Fayette County. We had people that came to that fair from all over the place, and that was because the counseling department, actually, for our, our high schools, I was very pleased with the turnout, because they actually, you know, went into the neighborhoods and brought students over on buses, because I was worried for a moment that it wouldn't be attended as well, because it was raining that day, but it was, I was very pleased with the turnout. So I know we've been doing really good, but to go back to your point, and Ms. Bowles brought up a good point, because I did send the question in the day, I was not happy to see that we did not have programs for our high school students, and, you know, you said it was due to the fact that we didn't have a lot of people signed up, but I do want to say for anybody that's listening, and I know that the, we really, I know at this district level, you all put the programs out, but we need to do a better job in our high schools with going to find students to have them take these classes, because as one of, during our budget here, and one of our student engagement specialists spoke about how COVID has affected us, and in every speech that we heard during graduation, most of those children talked about how they started out as in, during COVID, they were virtual. We have a whole set of children that are sitting there that are We have a whole set of children that are sitting there that are really non-readers. They are functionally literate, and I will, really would have liked to have seen some type of a reading program for those students at the high school level. And I don't know if we need to go back, and I don't know who can, if, because my other question is about how are we hiring high school students again? Because one of the things that I think works sometimes better are peer tutors as opposed to teachers. But we really need to address the fact that we have, like I said, functional, functionally literate people there. And I know trying to get the scholarships that the board offered, some of the schools, I was just calling principals, can you please just go find the kid in the hallway and sit down with them and have them apply for free money?
Let me, I'm gonna respond to some of that, Ms. Gauri, Dr. Gauri. We try with the summer reading program. We try.
I know you do.
In terms of the student workers, we aim to have a hundred student workers in our intern program and our summer program and other, throughout the school district. As of Friday, we've identified in seventy-one of those students. Some of those students will be participating or currently will participate or currently participating in our training for our summer school program. We have students, we'll know the count by Friday, who, you know, goes through the program. Again, we have lots of interest, but the completion is a totally different thing. So maybe Monday, I won't say Friday, but Monday will have a better count. We are still striving to get our one hundred student, student worker. Like I said, Friday, we're at seventy-one. We have identified, I think I shared with you a flyer, you saw some of the businesses that have asked for interns. We are working with them to assign those interns to them as we get students to join us. We actually have a number of student workers who will be working within the school district. I think it was school choice as an example, communications department is another example, where we have students who'll be working with us throughout the summer. So even though I may not say it, say it out loud, we have kids working, and we'll continue to have our student workers with us.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Striker.
Dr. Gauri, this is, this question is directed to Dr. Smith. Dr. Smith, have we tried some type of athletic and academic partnership in order to raise enrollment in these programs? Maybe like a, you know, a basketball program which requires kids to go to a reading class prior to playing or something to that effect?
We haven't put forth an official program yet. We've had discussions about it to expand our athletic offerings and make it more incentivized. That's coming.
You're gonna see at the athletic events, more of our, those retractables and stamps, you know, I'm talking about those things, those banners, you're gonna see more of those with the QR codes. We're working on that. I think you might have seen them for the voting. Yes. So it's something very similar. Teaching and Learning has been working with the athletic department. We start off with the voting initiative. You'll see more of that as well as more of the academic being announced and being more pronounced at the various events. And so we're working to schedule that because, you know, we want people there at these events, and so we are working on it.
Is that, we have our questions now. Since we were talking about, we were given some accolades, I was wondering if Ms. Trice was in the room. I see her back there. Ms. Trice, stand up. You deserve a standing ovation. I'm gonna give you a standing ovation. Great drive. Great job. Okay, we have pulled up the, we have the budget presentation that was in E-Board.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Smith. My name is Eugene Harrington. I'm filling in for Ramona Bivens to present the tentative proposed budget. We have the superintendent's priorities, and as to cultivate a school safety culture and promoting a positive work environment, increase academic achievement, maintain financial stability, and strengthen organized organization structure, and enhance the infrastructure with new facilities. We have four funds that we pull from, and the main one is our general fund, which has our day-to-day operations in it. We have our special revenue fund, which consists of major capital projects, special assessments, and expenditures trusts. We have our capital project fund, which includes our bonds and buildings and acquiring buildings and equipment. And we have our enterprise funds, which is mainly composed of our school nutrition. Here is a slide that's showing where majority of our funds are spent. And we spent eighty percent, eighty-eight percent of our budget on teachers, guiding counselors, media specialists, parent professionals, administrators, bus drivers, and support staff, and including benefits. The remaining goes towards textbooks, utilities, supplies, fuels for transportation, and other Our challenges, the ESF funds are ending this year, so it causes us to have to make some strong recommendations to try to find a way to keep moving with those projects that we started with ESF funds, but now they're going away, so we have to figure out another way to, oh, you hear me? Try to figure out other ways to keep those projects going on. We have a decrease in FTE, which are students. We have some non-funded state mandates, and we have salaries and benefits that are eighty-eight percent of our budget. Like I just mentioned before, ESF funds are ending, so positions are, would potentially going away, but we're deciding to, making a proposal to keep the SES teachers, employees for, that costs us five point five million, and early learning literacy coaches. Our operating costs, credit recovery platforms, textbooks, summer programs, technology support, and absorbing some of these costs within the general fund budget. We have a few non-funded mandates. The twenty-five hundred dollars that the teachers for the increase, which is an estimated eleven point six million, only receiving funding for approximately sixty percent of the teachers, and with that, we have to cover the benefits. So that's where majority of that sixty percent is coming from, is we're not receiving the funding to cover the benefits for those teachers to receive that twenty-five hundred. The TRS is increasing from twenty point seventy-eight percent to twenty-eight, twenty point seventy-eight percent from nineteen point ninety-eight. That's an increase that we have to take on. We were not expecting it. The state told us that it was going to be a gradual increase, but it came a little bit faster than we were expecting. And the health insurance increase for the certified and classified staff. Funding strategies, ten percent mandated reduction in operations. So we ask all of our departments to come up with at least ten percent that they can give back to their budget that we can use for other things. Classified central office teachers, like positions possibly trying to move them back to the classroom to help with our vacancies, and restructure virtual programs. This is a copy of our property digest. As you can see, we went up five hundred and sixty million in residential. We had a decrease in agricultural. Our commercial went up six hundred and three million. Industrial went up sixty-seven million. Our public utilities, they've gone up one point, one hundred and eighty-five million. And as you see, motor vehicles, we have not received the actual number that we're gonna put in that slot right now. We're waiting, we talked with the tax commissioner on Friday, and so they are actively trying to get us that number, so once that comes, we'll populate that number. Our mobile homes went down one point seven million. Heavy-duty equipment went down two hundred and sixteen. Our milage rate, we're gonna, we're not projecting to increase it, it's gonna stay at nineteen point six mils, and we're projecting a ninety-nine percent collection rate when we, for our property digest. So our total preliminary right now is at two hundred and forty-four million, and the variance will be about twenty-three point nine million dollars from FY twenty-four to This is our proposed general fund. This is basically explaining how we plan on covering some of the costs that we may incur for the upcoming year. So our fund balance as of July the first, we're expecting will be a hundred and eighty million dollars. Our revenue, projected revenues will be six hundred and seventy-nine point eight million. Our projected expenditures will be seven hundred point six million. We're asking to use twenty million of our fund balance to cover some of the initiatives that we have, which will leave our projected ending fund balance at a hundred and fifty-nine million. Now, that hundred and fifty-nine million is enough for us to cover our expenses for at least three to four months, which is recommended by the state that we do. So that's something that I very watch very closely to make sure we do not go over that This is just our general fund changes, and you can see the inflation, supplies, utility, fuel, salaries, these are the things that are going up. So our salary increases. Our certified staff, we plan to give them two thousand five hundred dollars increase, which incorporates eleven point six million. The certified staff will also get a step, and that's about ten million. Principals and APs will get a step, which averaged to about four hundred and seventy-five million. Bus drivers are getting a four point one percent increase. Classified, we're giving all classified below the grade level twenty-nine a step, which equivalents to three point one million. Custodians will get a salary supplement of a thousand, and we are trying to approve, propose a one thousand five hundred loyalty incentive, and that will be for all employees. And that's equivalent to eleven point four million. So like I mentioned before, the state health insurance is increasing, and it's costing us about three hundred and eighteen dollars a month per employee. So that's an additional cost that we're inquiring based on the mandate by the state. Things that we see that are increasing, supplies, equipment are increasing, fuel prices are increasing, and we're taking on some of those ESF fund expenditures. So those are some of the things that are driving our expenditures. As you can see here, for FY twenty-four compared to FY twenty-five, we receive about twenty million dollars in local property tax. That's an increase from FY twenty-four to twenty-five. Our local services, sources, a million dollars. State funding increased by sixteen point nine million. You can see our federal funds, we're keeping them flat, and the twenty million is the fund balance used. So we're projecting to use six hundred and ninety-three point six million dollars for our proposed revenue for FY twenty-five. This is a chart just showing basically where majority of our funding is coming from, and as you can see, is from state funding. This chart is showing the expenditures for FY twenty-five compared to twenty-four, and as you can see, we, a lot of them are increasing because of the benefits and the salary increases that we're proposing. There are some that have decreases because they actually, we tried to get ten percent from everyone, and a lot of them tried. So as you can see, you know, our biggest one, instruction, we have a thirty-eight million increase from year over year from twenty-four. So those, that's, you can see we're trying to put more money back into where the students And this graph shows our expenditures, and you can see we're putting everything we can back into students at sixty-one point fifty-four percent. This is our expenditure by fund, and as you can see, salaries and benefits took a huge leap, and that's basically because of the increases that we're proposing for this upcoming school year. These are our funds broken out by, I mean, the proposed budget by fund, and as you can see, we're receiving two hundred and forty-four million in local property tax. We're receiving twenty-four million in other services, other local services, and state funding, which is our largest resource of funding, and it's four hundred and three million. So you can see we're projecting to use, get revenue in about six hundred and ninety-three million. We have that seven hundred, that seven million, that is, those are grants that we're receiving in from the state, and the funding pre-K, safety and security items that we're receiving. And if you take the fifty-eight that beginning fund balance and add the ending, that'll give you the hundred and eighty million dollars that we were projecting for our fund balance beginning. The other funds are our special revenue, our capital projects, enterprise, and you can see we have a consolidated total funds of one point four billion. This is an example of our funds, all our funds, and you can see that instruction, like I said, we're trying to beef up our instructions. Pupil services and our state funds, revenue funds, you can see those are increasing as well. The enterprise pretty much stays the same, and that's basically our nutrition. And again, we're projecting to use total expenditures of seven hundred million, and we're gonna use twenty from our fund balance to get us to that point. This right here shows all the funds in the graph, and you can see salaries again is our number one expenditure, so we're trying to make sure that we can pay our teachers and keep everyone. Our remaining dates that we have, the next one will be June the third at eleven AM. That'll be the second public hearing. The final adoption, we're trying to get on Monday, June the third at six PM at our regular meeting. And our milage rate, we'll have an adoption on that also on the third at the regular meeting. And if, depending on what the county does, is what their milage rate will determine if we have to have two or three public hearings. And the July is our final milage rate, and that's where we'll have the adoption then. Any questions or comments?
Well, the first person I like, that I saw was Mr. Christmas, but before I let him make his comment, I want, for the people, we have people here that came for the budget hearing. All of this you can find on E-Board if you want to see it. I know it's on the website, but the charts that we're looking at, you can go under our E-Board and see all of the presentations that have been presented tonight. I'm gonna start with Mr. Christmas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Harrington, question for you. We went back to when you say is the, what is it, the general fund enhancement change or something like that? We went back to when you say is the, what is it, the general fund enhancement change or something like that? Go back to that slide. What did, the general fund changes salary enhancement? Just one, one, well, quick question.
Okay.
Uh, when you say all employees, you talking about central office staff and 1,500 loyalty incentive?
Yes.
You talking about everybody in central office?
Everyone that were, that were here at, at the end of this year.
At the end of this year?
Yeah.
I think we could use that money more, a little bit wiser than that. I think we should. I have a whole lot of friends in central office, but I gotta say what I gotta say. Uh, Chief, you might have to walk me out. Uh, principals and the, principals and above, uh, we need to look at doing stuff for our people. And, and, and I don't agree with it. So if this is on there, I'm gonna vote no.
Okay.
Ms. Hill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have two questions. Can you explain what it means um for the non-mandate? Um, when we're talking about the $2,500 for our teachers? It's a mandate from the state, but then we have a cost of 11.6 million. Can you explain that?
That cost is to cover the benefits. When the state gives us these funds, they give us the 2,500 for the employees, but they don't cover the benefit costs for it. So the district has to cover the benefits for everyone to receive this 2,500.
Okay. In addition, um, the second question is, I noticed that there's an increase in the health um insurance, but there's no cost. Can you, do we know the cost for that healthcare increase?
Uh, uh, we're calculating it now, but there is an increase that we will have to cover.
And will that come out of our fund balance?
Uh, yes, if we had to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Cooper.
Hello.
Hello.
Quick question. I know earlier in the presentation, you were saying that there were several positions that um you're asking that we fund, that was funded through the SFR funds. I think it was two that you had listed. My question is, what's the plan moving forward? Because we had an individual that came up and spoke earlier about the importance of it in, in the schools. So what do we have? What plan do we have moving forward? If you're proposing for it to be on the budget for this year?
Well, the, the plan is to bring the SES um employees back for one year. To bring the SES employees back for one year. Um, and it's a one year um that we're proposing for them. And during the year, we have plans in place to try to enhance them where they can become teachers or move into the classroom. So we're trying to put that in place. So that's why we are saying that we can fund them for one more year and try to find a place for them within the school district.
So how are we going to close that gap that that individual was saying is so important within the schools? If the SES, my whole point is, moving forward, if that's a critical role, what's our plan?
A lot of the services that our student engagement specialists hold, which it, which are great services, and I commend them on that additional layer of support, which is great for us. But as we move into understanding, clearly understand the role of the student services team, our psychologists, our social workers, our counselors, in being able to allow them to do the work that they're supposed to do on a daily basis, then they will move closer and provide that wraparound support. Just as, and, and we also have community schools, community in schools. We have a lot of other wraparound supports. Now, will there be a void? Yes, there will. But just as we were able to, you know, do it in the past, we have to pull together and use the resources that we have wisely, human resources.
Okay, thank you. So I think that's what I was trying to hear. Do we already have those services that we could um possibly push? Push is not the great, the best word.
Leverage, maximize.
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Ms., Ms. Bowles.
Um, my questions are, I kind of want to build off of uh Ms. Cooper's point really quickly. One of my questions is, when you talked about the unfunded mandates from the state, are you referring to unfunded mandates as TRS and health insurance?
Yes, we're covering the benefits for the employees along that 2,500 that they receive.
And I, I get that we're covering health insurance even after the governor gives a raise. I was just wondering if that's what you considered unfunded mandates were, were health insurance. My second question on slide number, oh, go ahead, Dr. Young.
So we have a huge unfunded mandate called the Georgia Literacy Act. I'm sure you may have heard about dyslexia, rolling out the science reading. The only dollars that we received from the State Department is $100,000 when we know we need millions of dollars to comply with that mandate. In addition to requiring to comply with it, the superintendent has to sign off that he is signing um man, meeting the requirements of that mandate. And it's very, very, very expensive.
I appreciate that. I, that does make sense. Um, and the reason I'm trying to understand what all the unfunded mandates are is I share, you know, there's nine of us, so you can imagine there being nine opinions. Um, but I do think that, you know, at some point, we've all got an idea of how we think we can better or best spend or allocate funding. So I do share, you know, my colleague's sentiment about making sure that we're investing in our people on the ground and in schools. Um, and I felt that way about many things. And I, I thank everyone, especially our, our folks in the schools who come and offer their thoughts during public comment. For the record, I bet all of us would do anything we could to keep every additional hand on deck in our schools that we could. So this isn't about a value add question. Every adult, every extra adult in a building here for children is a value add. So that's not a question about principle on whether we want it. This is about can we afford it? And so the $5.4 million that we're investing for SES is that I personally believe we can spend differently. But I thought it was just 5.4 out of the general fund budget balance, excuse me. I'm now clearer today that we're actually talking about 20.8 million dollars coming from the general fund balance because the SES piece is just a fraction of it. So we've got 20.8 coming from general fund balance, which it would already be great to not have any depletion of that very important balance. And of that 20.8, I've been, the 5.4 has been keeping me up at night. So I think, you know, the health insurance, there's nothing we can do about that. We need and our people deserve care and health insurance. The other unfunded mandate that you referred to um was about TRS. Our people deserve their retirement. And so I do appreciate Dr. Young helping me learn about the Literacy Act. Apparently that is an un, something that is required of us that we must invest in, but not be reimbursed for. So that's also another cost we have to eat. But as we listen to the cost that we have to eat, that we can't do anything about, I think it's even more important that we're judicious where we can be about things that are negotiable. And I'm not sure that I see that in every element of, of this budget today. So. Oh, my last question, because that was a comment, my, my, on slide nine, it talks about teacher-like positions in the central office, which I thought was interesting language. What is a teacher-like central office position?
Wow. All right. So teacher-like positions are starting with our lead teachers who do not um hold a class, for example. Um, we have our coordinators would be considered as a teacher-like position. Um, we have our coaches, those are teacher-like positions. Those are individuals who are required to have a teaching certificate. Okay? Thank you.
Did you? All right, I'm going to, I'm asking Ms. Blackwood to put another, to put another presentation up so that the board can look at that. This is the one with the, because the superintendent has recommended that we keep the student engagement specialist for the year, for next year. And uh, I want to go down to show the bar, the bar graph, please. I'm not really, I'm, my ears are kind of ringing. I'm not sure that we have, I'm not sure how the board is feeling. But this is the bar graph that shows that the original, our original amount of money that we were going to spend. I can't see very well either. Look down here. Uh, now, the superintendent's recommendation was to, what is it, Dr. Smith, to go up to, is it about, what's the amount from the fund balance? And I just want the board and everyone else to see in the other school districts because we had a recen- uh, a recommendation from one of our committees that actually wanted us to spend maybe about 2.2 million. And I want everybody to see the fact that everybody at this time is spending out of their fund balance. And we need to do something to be competitive. Now, we can't be competitive when we're, we, we cannot compete with Atlanta Public Schools. We don't, we don't have the, the tax base or whatever. Some of the things that, that Atlanta, Atlanta is offering, we cannot do. But I really feel like that we can be more competitive than what we have done. And I think that one of the things starting out with are the, the um student engagement specialist. And I think that we, we're not going to vote tonight, but I, do we have uh at least a majority of our board members that are willing to keep the student engagement specialist?
Madam Chair, um.
That, that is first and foremost, yes.
And I appreciate you bringing up the comparison to the fund, general fund balance of the uh metro Atlanta districts. And in comparison, um, based on the number of students and FTE counts, we have uh probably the healthiest general fund balance. And I would compare ourselves next to Fulton. Even though Gwinnett has uh more, but they are nearly four times our size. But they only have uh a fund balance amount that is um about 90 million more than ours, but they're four times our size. So as you evaluate this, 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 this bar graph, keep in mind our size, the, the, the number of FTE that, that we have to work with and our general fund balance compared to other districts and their size and that FTE.
Yes, so right now, we were looking at some of the questions that the other, when we had the hearing, now that, some of the questions that one of, I think one of the people asked, and I know this is going to be a problem, the $2,500 that's coming from the governor's office, is it just for teachers? Because we need to uh differentiate in who gets it. Because what happens every time we have this money coming to us, some people are not going to get it. So will that, we need to specify exactly who's getting that money. So when we do our question and answer, because they've asked some questions that they've sent in to you, uh, that they're going to send in to us about uh this money, is it, will it just be for teachers? Uh, so I, uh, Dr. Farley, I'm probably mispronouncing her name, I don't know why I'm mispronouncing her name. I've been knowing her forever, did point out, made a good point about the um, some of the things that we might need to be thinking about, such as, I thought that we had SST uh people that are in our buildings, but I don't know anymore because I don't know if we moved them out. Maybe some schools have them or not. One of the things that I did want to ask the board is whether or not, and one of the things I wanted to ask Dr. Smith is, because right now you're talking about giving everyone $1,500. And I, as I mentioned to him, I think that we need to look at, and if we need to spend more of our fund balance, I think that if we don't want to have five, we already are at 500 teachers, uh, 500 teacher vacancy. And the gentleman that was just actually sitting in the audience came up to me and just told me that he is, he's getting a promotion. But he also told me that he still would be willing to pay money to get out of his contract and go somewhere else because of the amount of money that someone else is offering. And I think that, I'm not sure that we have on our schedule to vote on the, the budget next week on Monday. I'm not sure that we're ready to do that. But I need to find out from you all if you want to wait at least another week or so to hear from them and have a call board meeting. Because one thing that uh the ma- the majority of us talked about before as well was, and I did have, if you all go in, you'll see the teacher scales, because we're talking about giving a step. And what happens when we give the step is that we seem to, you might be on step 16, you think you're going to step 17, and then all of a sudden you get a new teacher scale and you're still stuck on 16. You haven't gone anywhere. And, and one of the things that we had talked about, I believe it was, we talked about this, this morning, Mr. Straker, right? About three years ago, we were trying to look at our pay scale and try to have, to either be first, second, or third in the metro area. So we were looking at, we couldn't do everybody's pay, but we were looking at maybe looking at our veteran teachers' pay, maybe looking at, you know, the people in the middle, and then looking at our beginning uh teacher's salary and seeing how we could fix that. So i- in certain steps, we could be either first, second, or third. Because we can't fix everybody at one time. But I think that uh, just, this is my opinion, I can get voted down on this or whatever. I think we need to go back and look at other ways that we can be competitive. Last year, I think we paid the special ed teachers uh extra $3,000. We also have some schools that are still under state mandate. I, I don't forget all the acronyms. I don't know if it's TSI, CTI, whatever. I can't think of, off the top of my head right now. But those teachers at their school probably need more money uh than somebody else because they're, they have a lot of scrutiny. And I just think we need to be creative and go back and look at some other things to help. Um, and maybe, you know, we can get that information back to us this week. If you all can look at it, but as, now I'm just talking. That's something Dr. Smith would have to agree to.
The, the team has already been uh instructed to bring back to the board a comparison in terms of a beginning teacher's salary and an average teacher's salary with all of the metro uh school districts, to include Fayette, Henry, and Griffin Spalding.
Okay, so Bo, I, I need to ask from the board, though, are you all ready to vote on this? If he brings back other information next Monday, or do we need to have another meeting? Because number one, there's some things that we need to do anyway. We need to do the superintendent's uh evaluation. So we're going to need to have a call board meeting anyway. And I guess I need to ask Mr. Do- Mr. Doyle whether or not, since we did, we advertised that we were gonna vote on it next week, can we change the date?
That, that can be problematic, and we're gonna have to look at whether you need to re-advertise and set up a new timeline.
Well, we're still gonna have the hearing. I'm just talking about as far as our agenda, on our agenda, it says that we're voting on the budget next Monday. I'm asking, can we change that? I'm not trying to change any hearing dates.
That'd be okay. You would do that at the last item as your item number nine E, approval of the agenda, and you can do it then.
Okay, so I see Ms. Bowles light on.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I was just excited to engage in your conversation. Um, when you asked the board about what you think. When you asked the board about what you think we should do for the vote next week. I mean, ultimately, I just wanted to add my opinion for the record. Ultimately, I support our superintendent and intend to support the budget. I will say, though, that every budget for a municipality or a school district, any of that, is where our values live. And so I like to take these opportunities to at least talk about the things that we wish were different or think that we could do better or differently. So I don't expect to ever, and I don't know if any of us ever expect to always get all the things we want. And at this point, I'm more concerned with 100% you know, stipends or bonuses across the board than SESs, right? Like, we got to pick our battles, and at this, there's so many things we could talk about to improve with the budget. And I, I think I'll close by saying, yes, I'm prepared to continue the conversations and maybe even vote next week. But I will also say that one of the biggest challenges, I think, and this isn't new for any of us to hear, but is the timeline of this process. I can't recall really having budget meetings after graduation. And I'm really excited to make sure that we are doing this during budget season next year, because the rush through something as important as a $1.4 billion budget doesn't feel just.
Well, to respond to that, we're, we're still, we, we're on schedule. We've been, we, we still had hearings at the, we've done that every year. So we're, we're all right with that.
My vote is yes, that we should do a call meeting, look back over and see how we can reallocate the money.
Okay. And back to Ms. Bowles' part, we're, actually, I'm asking this because Dr. Smith is saying that he has some additional things, which is why I was asking if you are, were, you know, would be willing to not vote next Monday. So Ms. Williams, you're all right, Ms. Baker.
I'm, I'm, I'm just going to say, I'm a little frustrated because we've got these people. Some of the other counties have already said what they're going to do, so they're trying to balance what I'm going to do, what I'm not going to do. I hope that next year, we'll start taking people's opinions earlier. What are my priorities? And start that much earlier in the year. Not, let's not wait till spring. And so that when we start to see what the money's going to be, then we can start figuring this out. For those of you who are waiting, I'm asking you to think about this out of the goodness, please don't take this wrong, but sometimes if we are close to what Atlanta or Gwinnett is going to pay, you also need to figure out what your time is worth. Because Atlanta traffic is horrible. And if you're going to add two to three hours onto your travel, that might make a difference. For some of you, it's not, and I understand that, and that's the decision you have to make for your family. But if we come close, I want you to take that into consideration, please, because our kids need you. And, you know, maybe we don't say it enough, but, you know, I wish we could just go downstairs and print money out of the print shop, but they tell me that's illegal. So again, I think we waited too long to figure out what our priorities are, and I hope we do better down next year on that.
All right, I'm trying to find out if we're, do we, are we, how are we with not voting next week? Ms. Cooper.
I'm okay with pushing it back one more week.
Okay, so going another, okay. Ms. Doctor, oh, Ms. Bowles.
Yes, Madam Chair, I just wanted to add to the timeline conversation. We begin these hearings earlier in the year, and that's the only point I'm making. I think that when we approve the budget, it is often at, you know, at the end of the school year, but I don't want it misunderstood, the point that I'm making, that we can improve this whole process next year by even starting these conversations around the time of year we usually do, which is often Q1.
Okay. Dr. Haney. Okay. All right, anybody else? With pushing it past the, next week, past next week. All right, so, Ms. Baker.
I just want to confirm that we've added TRS for the maintenance that is eligible.
Yes, I believe, Mr., I mean, excuse me, Dr. Smith. We, yeah, we, he has in the recommendation, if you all look at your other slide, it's actually that one there. Look, I, I got it, I'm actually getting my eyes checked tomorrow. I can't, I can't read anything here. Oh, thank you, I actually have a hard copy. Okay, so what is already in there, excuse me, is for the SES positions, 11.4 million for incentives, 4.1% for bus drivers, and, what is this, $1,000 for the custodians? But you also, we, yes, the maintenance, the retirement, well, the maintenance is a part of that, I think you didn't give me that. Yes. TRS, that's in there, but we're just talking about now going back, looking at some other things that could be, that we might be able to enhance. So those things are already in there. So I, I have five people who, I'm for us, Ms. Williams, Ms. Cooper, Ms. Dr. Haney, and Ms. Hill in pushing it and us not doing it next Monday. Because to me, the other thing I feel like is kind of insulting, and we do this every year. You know, we say what we're going to do, we have this budget, then we have people to come in to the budget hearings, and then they tell us some things. Then we, I know we have to have two budget hearings, then we, like, for example, if we're going to vote, then they'll come back at 11:00 a.m. on next Monday. Then we would end up just pretty much, we're listening, but we're not really listening to really change. And then here we come at 6:00 o'clock, and then we go ahead and have a vote. So the way I always felt as a teacher was that I really, you just legally did this because that's what they say you need to do. You're not really listening to me, I get it, my opinion. So that's why I was thinking that maybe if we listen to them, and if we'll go back, if they will email us some of these questions, because someone did ask, I think they asked about the insurance. Someone out there said something about when they looked at one of the lines, they were trying to understand why the insurance increased. Can you tell them that, why the insurance, because I think it has something, I know the price went up, but it has something to do with, that we, with the benefits, the certified staff?
Yeah, so, the benefits went up, and the certified staff, we, we pay them at a different rate. And so, in order to make sure that everyone is covered, that's why we put that extra money into the, into the budget.
Okay, but what is it about classified employees that we don't get?
I don't know that answer right now, but I can get back to you.
Okay, all right. So, and so it looks like we, we will not, we're not going to vote on the budget next Monday.
And members of the board, keep in mind that we sent out a document that gave options kind of as an a la carte for the wishes of the board to, to determine if they wanted to do something more robust. So we know what we're working with, we have options, we know what those various groups cost for certain amounts of increases. And I'd ask that you, you know, look at that, and, 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 and we have further the conversation about what exactly is it that you would be willing to do for the benefit of our teachers, who are very deserving.
Okay. Do we have any other, any other comment? All right, so we'll change that date. Okay, but now we're on the proposed agenda from the superintendent and the chair, so you're still up. We're on the business services.
Okay, so, this chart is showing the comparison of our annual budget and year-to-date. As you can see, our local taxes are coming in at 82%. Our other local is coming in way higher than we expected, and that's because of the... Safety, okay, the safety and security funds that we got in. And so, the QBE, we, we're projected to get that at our 76%. And our federal programs, we're right on time with that, with 54%. We're at 81%, and we're pretty much on task to receive all of our, the total revenue that we were planning to receive for this year. Our expenditures, we're at 71%, and we're on target for that. And the reason why that would be, we're at 71% because we still have to pay teachers until September. So it doesn't stop on July 1st. This is our Splas and Real New Connection. So as you can see, we've been receiving about 5.2, 5 million each month for our, our Splas collections. And so this chart is going to show us about our consumer rules, non-consumer rules, and our contracts. So, we're having a summer job fair, that'll be June 8th. I don't know how that, is that part of my presentation? That's HR, I went too far. Right.
You got here. They're putting you in charge of everything.
We're having a job fair.
You're the new guy.
Yeah.
Ms. Cooper? Ms. Cooper? One second. Ms. Cooper?
Go to the next one? Okay. How did that get in?
Hey, Mr. Harry, you got excited, you were about to do something.
I'm up here, I'm going to do it all, yeah.
You're doing a great job. Just one question for you. With the purchasing report, when I was looking through the purchasing report, I saw that we had a lot of sole source providers, I guess. How many bids are taken when we're, I guess, taking bids for the different projects that we have? And especially when it's labeled like the sole source? Can you just kind of explain that to me?
Okay, a sole source is, is basically when you just have one company that could do the project.
Right.
So there's really, we, we can't...
No bids?
No bids for that, yeah.
Okay.
Does that beat you?
You have some technical difficulties.
I think that's it for you, sir, fine.
Mr. Harry was taking over everything.
Actually, no, did I miss the, I stepped away, did I miss purchasing?
Yes, he just went over that.
Oh, well, I have a question before we go, before you leave. I need to find out, in the purchasing report, there was something that, let me find it, that talked about Henry County. Was that correct?
Yes, we're excited. We're finally going to get a good dashboard, so I'm very excited about that. This dashboard gives us the visualization of a lot of our metrics that you quite often ask about. For example, you wanted to know attendance rates, if you want to know vacancies, if you wanted to know certification, et cetera. This particular dashboard also comes with a component that links to our strategic plan that the board has, where our community will be able to see in almost real-time the progress along the way. And so, we were able to work through this by using a, an opportunity that allows us to piggyback on another contract, Georgia allows that. And so, the Henry County Public School District has gone through the RFP, RFQ process. It is the product that we think is best for us, we looked at a lot of products. And because of the Henry County work and the agreement to allow us to piggyback on their contract, we got a good price, and it's not going to cost us any additional dollars. We have a dashboard, you probably haven't heard about it, because we don't use it a lot, because it's so difficult. And so we're just being able to transfer one set of funds, that fund, set of funds to this new product. So that's what we have, okay?
Mrs. Striker.
Yeah, the price tag on that, Dr. Young, is 365, correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
We're...
Illuminating.
Didn't equity and compliance come to us with a dashboard?
They did.
A couple of months ago, and I think it was less than 365.
Yes, there, this particular one is more comprehensive. This not only includes all the components that we're looking for equity and compliance, but also all of the data pieces that you often ask us about for our schools who want to see that data in real-time, so we're excited.
Didn't we work with Clark University in order to...
Who?
Compliance and equity and a variety of different individuals and organizations? Didn't we personally work with them?
Yes, we did, we did work with them.
In order to create that dashboard?
Yes, yes.
And now you're saying that it's not as comprehensive as we would have needed?
Right, that dashboard was looking at something on a more human race resources sorts of processes. And this combines not only that for human resources, but some other areas as well, okay? I like, I think once you see the use, I can send you a sandbox link, all the board members, you can have a sandbox link. A sandbox link is an opportunity to go behind the scenes and look at some samples that they put in there.
In doing that, just for my entertainment, can you send me the other dashboard also?
Yes, yes.
Equity and compliance, if, if you could send me that dashboard also, so that we could actually look at the two with those priceless notes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Oh, thank you very much.
Mr. Christmas.
I'm just making sure, did, did you say 365? We have 355 on the report.
It does say 355. I, I'm sorry, it's my fault, I told you I'm going to get my eyes checked tomorrow. I can't see the difference. Yes, but we, but, great point, we, we would like to see a comparison between the two. So if you could share that with us, we might, that might be one we might need to, since we got to vote, we might need to wait on that for a minute, because we need a little study time here. Because if we're talking money, and we're trying not to help other people with money, we need to save all the money we can save, and maybe divvy that up. Okay. Is he done, Mrs. Striker?
Great job, sir. You sure you don't want to do any other presentations?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Smith. You have received the Splas construction update. For the month of May, there were six payments totaling $8 million. There were no change orders for this period. For the month of May, there were six payments totaling eight million dollars. There were no change orders for this period. Additionally, you received the capital purchase report for purchases over fifty thousand dollars requiring your approval. Are there any questions for ongoing projects?
Are there any questions? I don't see any.
Thank you all.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, other members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Smith, colleagues and community members. The Personnel Changes Report summarizes all personnel actions for the period of April eleventh through May ninth, two thousand twenty-four. All human resources updates were submitted to the Board of Education for your review. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, before we go to that, I I see their lights on, but I was thinking you might want to give us a little presentation there. But I'm gonna go with, we're having some difficulties here. Dr. Haney, I saw your light first.
Ms. Albritton. Good evening. You look so pretty. Um, the task force, can you give me more information on that? Because I see it on the reports all the time, but I don't see anything happening. Can you educate me on the task force that you all have? Give me some information on that.
So um heretofore, we've had a separate task force for retention. This year, in each division's key performance indicators, we were all tasked with having an advisory. So our retention work is now a part of our advisory. So we have an HR advisory that um is a cross-functional group representative of both school representatives and departments and divisions. And when there are updates that need to be made to HR processes, for example, we lean on that advisory. We bring our recommendation, what we're thinking about doing, and we collect their input and opinion. And we do that with all HR-related matters to include retention.
You do.
Okay, that's it for me.
Uh Ms. Hill.
Good evening, Ms. Albritton. Thank you so much. Now, I'm just looking at our report and um my question is, it says to retirees, um to retire, how many did we ju- I mean, how many people just retired? And is that included in our vacancies?
Okay, so the number that you're referencing would be the number of retirements for this personnel changes period. So the period of April eleventh through May ninth. Versus that being a comprehensive number. So that just represents the number of personnel transactions of that type for this personnel changes report.
Okay, we just had a celebration of retirees. How many was included in that? And is that reflected in our vacancies?
Yes, so the the numbers are definitely reflected in the vacancies if those positions have not been filled. And I can share with you um outside of this session via email with the board, the number of total retirements we've had to date this year. But if the position's vacated by a retiree, if it has already been filled, then no, it wouldn't be in this number because it's filled already. But if it remains vacant, then yes, it's reflective in the number.
Okay, so um let me just make sure I have clarification. The retiree celebration we had included all retirees for what period of time?
For this year.
Okay, so whether they retired at any time in two thousand twenty-four, we celebrated them at that event?
Yes.
Okay, but some of them may already be gone and some of them may have left at the end of the school year?
Correct. And if their position has been backfilled, then that number is no longer captured in the vacancy data.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Striker.
Ms. Albritton, I don't know if this question is directed towards you or Dr. Carter. But um I do know that you guys made an effort to um to recruit the individuals that were being terminated from Seven Pillars?
Yes.
Can you tell me a little bit about that and how you went about that process?
Absolutely. We collaborated with um Dr. Carter and we were able to host an information session on May second. There were thirteen of the Seven Pillar staff members who joined us for that information session. Um to date, nine staff members from Seven Pillars have applied for positions. Three have been hired. One has been recommended for hire and is moving through the workflow. And then um one has been, one was recommended but declined the offer.
Thank you.
Ms. Baker.
Okay, um I know in years past with retirees, especially on hard-to-fill positions such as math and science and special ed, retirees have been able to come back for at least part-time, if not full-time. What is the current standing with the law on that? Because I know it changes every time they they sneeze.
Yes, so right now we have three predominant options for retirees. They're able to join us full-time through House Bill three eighty-five. If they return through House Bill three eighty-five, they must, if they desire to return through House Bill three eighty-five, they must have been retired for a full year, have retired with thirty, at minimum thirty years of service, and come back in the highest needs areas um as dictated by our RISA, which is Metro RISA. So those areas for our district would be special education, math, and science. So that would be the first option. The second option would be to substitute teach. And then the third option is um they are able to suspend or terminate their benefits if they want to teach full-time. Um and that could be in any area not germane to those requirements of the House Bill thir- uh three eighty-five.
Dr. Haney.
Yeah, um Ms. Albritton, the information that Ms. Hill requested, could you please indicate the um the departments? She asked for some data, but could you indicate those departments of where those retirees were retired from? Because I'm looking at the number of vacancies in the different departments that has the high numbers. I'd just like to be interested to see where those retirees, those departments, where they came from. Thank you.
Ms. Cooper.
Ms. Albritton, just really quickly, I know that we're having a job fair on June the eighth and I see that there is a high um number of positions open for two key areas, which is the elementary education and the special education. How many other job fairs are we gonna have throughout the summertime to try to recruit some of those um individuals for those areas? And the second part to that was in your recruitment process, um if the vacancies, if we come to the point to where we're starting school and the vacancies still haven't been filled, what's our contingency plan? Uh will it be larger class sizes? What do, what does that look like?
So in terms of additional fairs, we are definitely poised to offer additional fairs based on need. So right now, we do have the June eighth um fair planned. And following that, we'll definitely hi- post fairs um as needed, without question. We've been doing um some hiring events in collaboration with Teaching and Learning and Strategic Improvement. Last week, we hosted an elementary event where uh we noticed that there were certified applicants, certified teacher applicants that had applied but not been recommended for hire by schools. So the Human Resources Certification Team went through each applicant, determined their areas of certification. We called them all and invited them to an event last Wednesday at Jonesboro High School just for um specific elementary schools. We're taking that same approach with secondary and that event is tomorrow. So we've captured all of the certified teachers who've applied but not been recommended for hire, contacted them all via telephone and email, and then we'll be partnering with middle and um high schools tomorrow. The goal is at that event, for the onsite interview to occur, for the school leader to recommend them for hire and for them to complete the background information. Um and that was the model we used last week. So those are additional efforts. I was also able to capture some other efforts that are in place in my response to the questions that Dr. Gorey issued earlier. So you'll see some of the other things that we have in play.
All right, well, my question, if everybody has spoken, is that five, that number five hundred is very glaring to me. And Ms. Cooper just mentioned special ed and elementary ed. That amount is about two hundred. What is it, two fifty-five? As I'm gonna just round it on up to three hundred. That that bothers me because when we've already talked about the um being functionally literate. But um someone has, I sent you all an email uh tutored by teachers has been reaching out to us and I'm trying to, I don't understand why we're not having a conversation with them about getting teachers.
So they are one of um a few vendors who've been doing direct connects. And right now, we have an open request for proposals. And so we're asked by Purchasing not to engage directly with any vendors in the contracted teacher space or teacher recruitment services space while the RFP is open, because that could um potentially jeopardize that process. So with the vendor that you mentioned, we ensured at the top of the open, the thirty-day period, that they receive the information directly from Purchasing.
Okay, so I met this lady last year at a conference. She's actually somebody that used to work for us at Rivendell Elementary School. We we are missing five hundred teachers. I don't know how long Purchasing. I don't know what we need to do to go through Purchasing. But we need to speed this up because this is almost as bad as trying to get through our application process. We 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 gotta speed stuff up because we can't, school will be started before we know it. And we don't need to be five hundred teachers short. Not to mention, we're talking about a budget now, talking about people, you know, that in in metro, uh the metro Atlanta area, people can just jump from place to place. I ran into a lady at graduation. She said, hey, Ms. Gorey. I'm like, she knew, she knew who I was. I said, well, how do you know me? She said, I used to work for you. Well, where you working now? Working Fulton right now. But she said, I'm thinking about looking at that money they have in Atlanta and I might be going over to Atlanta. So we need to speed up what we're doing because we need, we we really need to have people in these classrooms. And then my other question, I see Ms. Bowles, like, we had sent some termination letters to our people that are not certified because they haven't passed the GATES and they're not certified. What can we do, I think I asked this question a long time ago, what can we do to try to get those people back? And I I said one question, but I'm cheating now. And then have we had any flexibility in this transfer process that we have? Because a lot of people left because we we try to, we got this little timeline, you know, that, you know, I don't agree with it. We need teachers, so we need some flexibility. If somebody say they tired of working for Dr. Smith and they want to go over here to Mr. Striker's school, even if they missed the deadline, we need to be flexible and say, you know what? If that's gonna keep you in Clayton County, we gonna get you out of Dr. Smith's school and we gonna put you over here with Mr. Striker. Because people are, they're leaving and and we need to be more flexible.
So as it relates to those that were not renewed because of certification, the only impacted educators that were not renewed for certification were those for which we could get no additional certification from the PSC. So if they were on a one-year waiver, the PSC has been very clear that they're not gonna extend the waiver. If they had been on a three-year provisional and hadn't done what they needed to do to convert to the SRT, which is the clear renewable, we were not able to secure certification for them. So that's the group of educators that was not, that were um not renewed because of certification. Once they um they're eligible to return to substitute teach, um the PLC is working on um additional GATES preparation sessions, but we're unable to secure any certification for them. Um the certification team called teachers, talked through what they had done. When are you testing? When can you, as soon as you get the results, share them with us? So their non-renewal was really the the only option at that point. There were no other options for certification. Um previously, we've been able to leverage the second-year waiver. The PSC has been utterly clear that that will happen no more. They are no longer offering second-year waivers.
And that, uh board members, is a problem because I don't know if the PSC been keeping up with the national teacher shortage, but to make the teacher requirement uh more stringent in a, in a, in a, in a decreasing market uh just doesn't make sense to me.
Ms. Bowles.
Thanks, Ms. Albritton. Um outside of the fact that I absolutely love our SESs and I think they would make great teachers, um this five hundred vacancy, you know, concerns me as well. So my question, outside of our internal practices that we can think through, we have, to Madam Chair's point, some partners. And so I'm curious about our third-party partners in teaching HR and whether or not we can renegotiate any of those agreements. I'm specifically thinking of InterLage and TFA.
So initially, we were able to secure, um Purchasing worked with us to secure the extension, um a one-year extension with our current partners, which would be TFA and InterLage. Uh we were able to go back and they partner with us to then have the open RFP. So that's where we are and it closes on the thirtieth with presentations the first week of June.
Okay, and that's when we'll know what?
Who responded to the request, who submitted a a response to the RFP, and then we'll be able to move forward with the remainder of the process.
Thank you.
Well, look, if if some of the people didn't didn't respond, can we just get on the telephone and call them up and tell them to put in, to do what they need to do?
So that would be for Purchasing. We couldn't do it because it's the, the RFP is in our space. So Purchasing is the neutral party in this process for the district. So as a HR representative, I couldn't call the vendor, for example, that you mentioned because then it could potentially be misconstrued as favoritism or I'm probing them or asking them, supporting them with their submission.
And also, there's numerous cities across the country that are laying off uh lots of educators and we're putting together a summer plan to go and visit and have fairs uh and 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 ask the board to support a relocation package for a lot of these teachers that are, that are losing their positions across the country.
This, this, this is why Johnny can't read because of this hierarchy. We, we need teachers, but we can't pick up the phone and call somebody because that shows favoritism. And the people are, that that just doesn't make any sense to me. I, I, it just doesn't because if, I I just know we need some teachers. And we need to be getting on the phone, calling whoever we can call to get these teachers to come and work for us. And the next thing we need to do, we need to tell the governor and everybody else in the state of Georgia that teachers should be going to college for free, just like we have these pathways. We got some pathways where people go to school for free. I don't know what they're looking. They're, they're making more rules. All they want to do is make rules and make laws about you need to do blah, blah, blah. If we see that we have people with a problem with taking GATES, if we've, if you've gone to a college and your college is is a, is, you know, if if there's, we have a certified uh program, they're all right with Cognia, they're accredited, all this type of stuff, we we have put them through a program, why not? I I just don't get it because you have some, you have some great teachers right now that can't get past GATES. Is, what, how often can you take GATES? Does, is GATES just out for once a year or something? What what's the schedule?
There are multiple testing windows, um but it's based on the specific test. So there are some tests, for example, the ethics test, that's a preliminary requirement. You can take that at home and you can pay and get your results immediately. Versus if there's a GATES that requires writing, getting those scores back um takes a little bit longer and there may not be as many testing windows. So there's a a testing schedule.
I just don't get, okay. I think we've beaten it. Okay, Ms. Albritton, it's just, some of these rules just don't make sense to me. They just don't. So, well, did we, can these people go into tap?
So uh we've been having conversations about that. The state has kind of redefined some of the The state has kind of redefined some of the, some of the things related to TAP. They can go into TAP in special education without first passing the GATES. And so we're working with TLSI on making that programmatic change. But for all other areas, they'd have to have a pass to GATES before being admitted to TAP.
Okay.
So there's, part of the criteria for TAP is locally driven, but then other parts are state-driven. One of the updates that they made at the top of the calendar year was that in order to be admitted to TAP, and this would be all TAP entities, all TAP EPPs across the state, you have to have a pass GATES for every area, with the exception of special education. So if you're pursuing TAP as a way to earn special education certification, you can be admitted to TAP without first passing the GATES. For all other areas, you have to first pass the GATES to be admitted to TAP.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll go to the next item on the agenda. Board Matters Policy Series I First Read. I think that, I think possibly, we might have had some members on the Board to meet with Ms. Garrett. Are we? Ms. Baker?
I was just gonna say, I attended this meeting, and I really thought I was gonna walk into a room of five or six people, and that's not the case. I walked into a room full of about 45 people. So I just got to see this process, and I want to thank everybody, because everybody who comes into that meeting has a little bit different perspective. And that's what we need for these. One thing that got me was that our kindergartners now have a grade. I don't think any kindergartner should have a grade, but I guess that's me in the state to fight that one. So, but I just want to thank each and every one of those people who came in and shared with the group.
Do we have anything at this today for the? All right, well, we'll be having our second read. Okay, going down the agenda for action. Employee Tribunal members are going to vote on these things. Come on, Ms. Garrett.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent Smith, and members of the community. Before you, you have a recommendation to add additional members to the employee tribunal. You also have the recommendations, and you have the applications, as well as the resumes for those individuals. The purpose is just to ensure that we have fluidity, and we have appropriate numbers in the event that we do have to hold an employee tribunal.
All right. Are there any questions?
Our pleasure.
All right, so these are added to the current group, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Williams. The Employee Tribunal. Okay. All right, the recommend, do we have any other comments? All right, the recommendation from the superintendent is for the Board to approve the, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong. I'm pitiful. It is for the Board to approve the Employee Tribunal panel members list as submitted. Ms. Baker?
So moved.
All right, I have a motion by Ms. Baker, Ms. Cooper. It's been moved improperly second that we accept the superintendent's recommendation. Ms. Bowles, okay, it's a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is the Student Tribunal Panel members.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Board members, Dr. Smith, and community. Before you, Board members, is the recommendation for, to approve additional Student Tribunal panel members per the Georgia Code 20-2752.
All right. Do we have any comment, any questions? Ms. Williams.
My question is about how do you choose the student panel members? Like, they all from the same department. Isn't that diversity for the student panel?
Our calendar is created yearly, not just by department, but a mixture of departments throughout the district. For example, a tribunal panel can be inclusive of elementary assistant principal, a high school assistant principal, or a middle school principal, or a central office certified personnel.
I hear it like it's mostly all assistant principals. I'm saying, why is it just assistant principals versus like counselors or some other people that's not assistant principals?
Yeah, counselors are not eligible for, per the code, to be on the tribunal panel. This, if you, this is just the list of the second tier of administrators that were not approved in July. As you know, tribunal panel members have to go through training yearly. This is the group that did not go to the original training back in July.
It's like 90% of them are all assistant principals. I just feel like if it's, I don't know, it should be a mixture. If it's for the students going on trial, then it's the same people, on the same position.
Yes, well, you know, the process is led by tribunal hearing officer, which makes sure that the, that facilitates the hearing. And the code that I stated earlier guides the procedures of the hearing.
All right, Ms. Cooper.
Ms. Williams asked the question.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna give my comment that I give every year. And that is, that I think that we should have someone else on that tribunal list that's neutral, because some, because I just think that, you know, those, it's those APs, they basically deal, they give out the discipline, and it would be nice to have maybe an advocate, somebody on the, on there that, you know, is neutral. But that's my comment every year, you all don't listen to me.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Cooper, you have another comment?
No, I was, just had the same sentiment as you and Ms. Williams, just wondering why we don't see a diverse background in positions. All we see is the assistant principals. We could add like community leaders, or some other individuals other than just assistant principals.
Well, we'll take that in consideration and go back to the code, and see if, see if that is feasible.
Okay. All right, well, we need a motion for the superintendent's recommendation to accept these members. Mr. Christmas?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Okay, Ms. Baker?
Second.
It's been moved improperly second that we accept the superintendent's recommendation. Please vote. All right, and it's eight in favor and one abstention. I should have been in the extension myself, but I'm gonna stick with it. All right. You can see it right. Ms. Baker, you can see it right? Okay, thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is the Wright Community Charter School.
Good afternoon, Dr. Smith, Superintendent, Board Chair, Dr. Goree, Vice Chair, Mr. Striker, and esteemed Board members. Today, we have the Wright Community Schools petition, and the Wright Community School petition was not adequate and met the minimal requirements as outlined by the state of Georgia that would help the reviewers ascertain if the petitioner could operate a school that was financially viable and was in the best interest of Clayton County. Therefore, the committee recommends the CCPS Board of Education vote to deny the charter petition as recommended by the superintendent. Are there any questions?
Do we have any questions? Mr. Striker, I see your light.
Dr. Carter, can you briefly explain to me the process in which you take in regards to directing that recommendation to the superintendent?
Yes, we have a very rigorous process. Starts in January, the petition process starts in January with the letter of intent. And then after the letter of intent, the petitioner submit an application. With that application, we utilize the state Godos, Georgia, the Godos template. And so we don't have our own template, we utilize their template. So the petitioners complete that template and submit it to us. Our committee, which is composed of area superintendents, assistant superintendents, department leaders, and everyone that's an expert in their field for operations, school operations, governance, nutrition, et cetera, review that petition. And then, once we review that petition, we have a rubric that we look at to see if they are meeting the standards, not meeting the standards, and what concerns that we have once we have reviewed that petition. For example, there may be some nutrition concerns or budgetary concerns. So we compiled a list of concerns from the rubric. Then we have, after that process is over with, the second step is capacity interviews. And let me just backtrack a second. We accept all petitions, and we review all petitions. And also, once the petition review process is done, the application piece, we also give every charter school petitioner a capacity interview. Some districts don't do that. For example, if you remember the SESC, if you don't meet standards, they didn't move to the, you know, move along the process. We let all charter schools move along the process. So then we have the capacity interview. In the capacity interview, we address all of the concerns. So each department leader, or whoever was on that committee at that time, will ask questions about whatever those concerns are, so that we can get more clarification, additional clarification. Once that process is over, then we meet as a team. Once we meet as a team, we discuss what we saw in the petition again, and then also what were their responses for clarification. We then have four different categories that we utilize. So it could be rejection of that petition, clarification of that petition, revision of that petition, where we ask them for, you know, more revisions or clarifications, and then also approval. Now, if they are not meeting the majority of those standards, we will say rejection, which is what happened in this case, if the clarifications. Everyone does not ask for revisions. So it's those, you know, four different categories. And let me also clarify that once the committee rejects, it doesn't necessarily have to go to the Board. But in our case, the Board wants all rejections, all petitions to come to the Board. So then we submit it to the Board, then you have an opportunity to review. Once you review and make your decision, then we accept that decision and send it to the state. And then the state also has to review, they have a committee. It's a very rigorous process. So they have a committee that they review the petition as well, they hold capacity interviews, and then they decide whether or not the charter school would be approved.
Thank you.
Ms. Baker?
I'm sorry. So if there is a denial?
Yes.
Can they apply the next year?
That is correct. So the petition process will start again in January. So based on our Board policy, our petition process start the first Friday in January.
Are there any other questions? Ms. Hill?
Yes, Madam Chair. Dr. Carter, when you have these discussions, do you specify the area of concern? Or is there just a questioning and allow them to respond, and then go back and make a determination?
Great question, both. So I utilize the National Association of Charter Schools capacity interview questions. So we begin there to ask those questions, because it's meet standards. And then, once we ask those particular questions, then we go specifically to what we saw in the petition. What are our concerns? And then we ask them about those for clarifications, to make sure that what we read is what we're understanding.
Thank you.
All right, the recommendation is, the committee recommends the Clayton County Board of Education to vote to deny the petition as recommended by the committee. I need a motion. Mr. Striker?
Madam Chair, I vote that we accept the superintendent's recommendation to reject this, this, the Wright Community Charter Schools petition.
Okay. Ms. Cooper?
Second.
All right, it's been moved improperly second that we accept the recommendation to deny the charter. Please vote. All right. The vote is, let me see, we have, let me take that light out. We have seven in favor of the superintendent, of the committee recommendation, one in opposition, and one abstention. Get that, Ms.? All right. The next item on the agenda is the Strategic Waiver School System Resolution.
Good evening again. The strategic waiver is finally being reviewed by the Georgia Department of Education. We presented to you in March information about the waiver process. We also shared with you at that time, the original application. We received our feedback, and it was attached as a link. We needed to make some minor adjustments. The Strategic Waiver Executive Summary Capsule in red, in the red print, it tells you what adjustments were made. And we ask that you accept the document as we are sharing with the Georgia Department of Education. In order to do that, you have to respond to the resolution. We ask that you support the resolution. The superintendent is requesting that we, that you approve the resolution and sign it by the Board Chair. Then it will be signed by the superintendent, and then it will be uploaded for submission to the Georgia Department of Education. The resolution and the signatures must be in the portal by March the 31st, 5 o'clock PM. I mean, how about May, May 31st? If you refer to your executive summary, what's printed in red, what's printed in red are those changes that were reflected. We have the remedial education. We asked for some information. The State Department wanted some more details, we provided that. The alternative education, we were able to remove that request, because the Georgia Department of Education regulations are already doing what we want to do. The limited English proficiency, we removed that one, because the Georgia Department of Education is already allowing us to do what we requested. So you can see the reasons for the removal of several of our requests. That is because we already have those options in the policy itself. We also have the public school choice. We did not need that waiver after looking at our own processes. The school day, school year, we just removed some of the language that was not needed. In addition to the media program, we are already operating under the current law. There's no need for changes. And then the class size report, they wanted some additional information, and they wanted an example how that would be implemented, and we provided that in the updated application. So in terms- So in terms of the actual application and the information that's presented to the Georgia Department of Education, you have a copy of that via the link that's in the executive summary. Oh, someone, I received a question today. The application has a section on it called student improvement outcome, and the word no, that's put there by the Georgia Department of Education. That is not something that we have asked for. Okay, all right, we're good, all right. Okay, thank you.
I don't want my mic on so they, all right. The superintendent's recommendation is for the board to approve the Swiss resolution as submitted. I need a motion, please. I think I saw, oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, are there questions? I see two, Ms. Baker. Your light was on, were you?
I, I was going to make the motion, but if you have questions, go ahead.
You ready to make the motion? Okay. Wait, well, wait a minute, Ms. Hill, Ms. Bowles, you all have questions or?
I'm ready to second a motion.
Got you, I, that's what I was wondering why Dr. Young was, okay, let's go, Ms. Baker.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for approval of the resolution as stated.
All right, Ms. Bowles.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded that we accept the resolution as submitted, please vote. All right, it's a unanimous vote. All right, the next thing that's on the agenda is the approval of the proposed meeting agenda for June the 3rd. Let me ask Mr. Doyle this question. On the proposed agenda, we have the, we, we have decided that we're not going to vote on the, on the budget next week. Do we need to put a date in there for that or just take it off?
You can just take it off.
All right, so we, the agenda, the proposed agenda for Monday, June 3rd, we are deleting the adoption of the June, I can't even read, of the fiscal year 2025 budget. So I need a motion for us to accept the agenda without item number 12. Mr. Christmas.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the recommendation for the approval of the meeting minus item number 12.
All right, Ms. Cooper, I think I saw your light next. It's been moved and properly seconded that we accept the agenda without the voting for the budget. Okay, it is a unanimous vote. Have I covered everything?
Madam Chair, you have completely finished everything.
Okay, well, I believe that we are in a German. Thank you all so much for your attendance. Have a great evening. We're in a German.